Good evening and welcome to the October 12th Chatham Select Board meeting. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify me. Pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16th, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20 until April 1st, 2022, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted both in person and via remote for public participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. Conference ID is 134208476, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link that's posted. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post the record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. And just a reminder for everyone, please mute your mic and turn off your camera unless you're speaking, or you're speaking at the podium. Excuse me. Let's start with a roll call. Board Member Davis.
Present.
Board Member Metters.
Present.
Board Member DeCastro.
Present.
Board Member Dykens.
Present.
And the Chair, Peter Kokolos, is present. Let's just go an overview of our meeting for tonight. We'll start with our minutes. Then we have public announcements and agenda item requests. Then we get into new business, and the first thing on there is a coronavirus update, and the public will be encouraged to speak if they want. Then we have public comments on our business agenda, and that has to do with all the business agenda that I'll talk about subsequently. First before that is a public, I mean after that is a public comments on a public hearing, which is an annual entertainment license for Dogfish Taco. Now, the business agenda board discussion items are consider an Oktoberfest request, consider a giant donation, consider a support for a transfer fee coalition initiative and Community Preservation Act-funded projects. So let's start with the minutes. Does anyone have any changes? I have one comment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, okay. I do have one, thank you. I do have one comment on page four, first paragraph. As I recall, we were in the first paragraph, the last line, it says, "Michael for Services, 465 Main Street on December 31st, 2021. The time will be from 12:00, and I believe it was 6:00 rather than 9:00." Okay, anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's take a vote. I'll start now with Jeff.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Cory.
Aye.
Shereen.
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. Next up is public announcements and agenda item requests. Anything from the Board first? No? Jill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to remind everybody about our special town meeting coming up on Saturday, August 23rd at 9:30 a.m. at Veterans, did I say August?
You said August.
It's terrible. October 23rd.
That's my trick.
Yeah, October 23rd at 9:30 a.m. at Veterans Field. We'll still be under COVID safety protocols, but we encourage the public to attend. We do need a quorum of 100 voters, and if there's any questions, feel free to contact the office. The website has the warrant posted under Town Meeting Central, or just search Town Meeting Warrant, and then we'll have hard copies available, I believe, in the next day or two. We'll have them circulated through the town offices. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe Alex has her hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just to add to what the Town Manager said, I do have copies of the warrant in my car. I picked them up this afternoon, so they will be available tomorrow at the Town Office Building, so everybody knows.
Thank you, Alex. Anyone else?
And I, yes, I do have one other announcement. I just want to remind the public about tax bills, that tax bills are due November 1st, Monday, November 1st. We've had quite a few people coming into the office, into the Treasurer's Office, saying that the tax bills have their street address on them and not their P.O. box, and so they're not getting the bills. So if anyone has not received a tax bill yet, please contact the Treasurer's Office and get a copy of your bill, because we don't want you to be late paying your first half tax bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Do I have any from the public? I don't see anything online. Anyone in the audience? No, okay. Next on our agenda is under new business, and it's a COVID update from, I guess, Dr. Bob.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So for tonight's COVID update, hopefully it will be a relatively short one. We are currently at 398 confirmed cases of COVID-19 since the beginning of the pandemic in March of 2020. That is an increase of two cases since the last update. We have had two cases in October of this year, and right now we have no active cases. So we had two cases earlier in the month, but they have now completed their 10-day quarantine period. So for the first time in a fairly long time, we have no active cases in Chatham. Just for comparison, last year, at this same time in October, so the 12th of October, we had zero cases. So with two cases this year, we are definitely getting closer to where we want to be. And if you let me share my screen here real quick. This is the figure of our monthly case count since the beginning of the pandemic, and you can see where we started off this year with the very high levels. The summer was down again, just like it was last year. We had the uptick in August of September of this year, which had everybody concerned, and of course, we had the same situation nationally. Our national cases are now down by about 30% from roughly 150,000 today, per day, to about 100,000 cases a day. And you can see we had a fairly precipitous drop-off between September of this year and so far in October, and hopefully that trend continues. As more people get vaccinated, those 65 and older are now eligible for a third dose or the booster dose of the Pfizer vaccine. The FDA panel was meeting today to review, start the review of the data on the requested third dose for the Moderna vaccine and a second dose of the J&amp;J vaccine, so we'll hear more about that later this week. And then the CDC panel, I believe, is scheduled to meet next week, and we're also expecting that we should hear something by the end of this month for the children aged 5 to 11 in terms of their ability to get the vaccination, starting probably in November. Just quickly, I wanted to show you where the cases are. As we've seen for the last, say, month and a half or two months, it continues to be that 20- to 39-year-old demographic that leads in terms of statewide percentage of the number of cases. Although I will tell you that some of the younger demographics, the 5s, 5, 9, 10 to 14, and 15 to 19 are increasing. At the same time, we're seeing a decrease in that 20- to 39-year-old. The older demographics, those 40 and above, the percentages have stayed pretty much the same over the last couple of months, because obviously, they were the first groups that were able to get the vaccine. They're the ones that are mostly fully vaccinated by now, and as I said, now, the older groups is also eligible for the booster shot. In terms of our percent positivity in Chatham, we have dropped down a little bit from the spike that we were seeing at the end of August and September. Unfortunately, the downward trend did not continue. It has leveled off at about 3.14% in Chatham. The statewide percentage is 1.92, and the Barnstable County is 2.87, so Chatham remains a little bit above the Barnstable County average, and we are fifth highest on Cape Cod. If you remember earlier, I was always reporting that Chatham was one of the lowest on the Cape, but recently, we have been in the upper end of some of this data. And then finally, just the last one, is our average daily incident rate. And you can see from that graph, just similar to the percent positivity, we are declining, and for that one, the decline has actually continued. It's not quite as sharp as the decline was in previous weeks, but at least it is not leveled off like the percent positivity. So these are all good trends, and hopefully, they will continue, and, you know, hopefully, and I think everybody's feeling the same way at the national level and all as well, that we can get through the holiday season this year without the kind of spike that we saw, you know, following the holiday season last year. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. Anyone on the Board? Questions? None? Anyone in the audience? Online? I don't see anyone either. Thank you, Dr. Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next, we have public comments on business agenda. Let me go over those. If you have any comments on these next agenda items, please raise your hand, or, yeah, please raise your hand. Consider an Oktoberfest request. Second is consider a giant donation from Sandwich Giants. Consider support of a transfer fee coalition initiative, and finally, the Community Preservation Act-funded projects. So any comments on that?
Frank Messina.
Okay. Anyone in the audience? Okay, Frank? I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Kokolos. Hi, this is Frank Messina. I guess I'm speaking, wearing a couple of hats, but primarily as Chairman of the Historical Commission, and I'd like to speak to the Item D on your agenda, and I believe this is the appropriate time to speak to that, if I understand the new process, which, by the way, I think is working pretty well. Maybe let you guys get out of there before 10:00. But there's a report in the package, which I was able to get online from Alex, the Finance Director, and I subject is the update, it seems, of the community preservation funding projects. It seems to focus on the Marconi, which was something near and dear to my heart for 20-some years, but specifically, I'm not going to speak to the general issue of maintenance of the buildings, although I have to say, the Town of Chatham has spent a significant amount of money, CPA funds, you know, on the purchase of the property, the National Registered Marconi RCA District, and the buildings, the museum, and the housing. So I think it's really very, very positive. But I would like to speak to the issue of the towers, which is addressed in the report on the status as it relates to the Marconi RCA District, the towers, and the antenna. These towers are what's considered contributing structures to the National Registered District, which technically means, you know, it's supposed to stay a contributing structure. Now, early on in the process, when the master plan was done for this site, it was pointed out to the town that these towers were in need of potentially some maintenance. So it's been more than 20-some years now that we've known that there needs to be some maintenance. Now, there have been some things done over time, but nothing specific to the actual work that needs to be done on the towers. We did a report, I guess it was like good 10 to 15 years ago, and there was no action taken at the time for a number of reasons, and then I believe Terry Whalen, who's the key person on this, was asking to do another analysis and survey. I'm not sure whether that was done or not, but if it hasn't been done, I think it needs to be done as quickly as possible. The narrative talks about the fact that it's not a priority, but I think it is a priority, and I would hope that the Selectmen, you know, prioritize that effort to do a full study of the condition and the restoration of these contributing structures. The other item is, in this particular narrative, it talks about something I wasn't aware of, that mitigation ever measures and potentially a full study to relocate the Steel Tower Number One, which is on Ryder Cove, due to increased bank erosion. I don't know whose idea that is, but it doesn't sound to be a good idea. You can't possibly take those towers apart and move them and put them back together. If, in fact, we are in a situation where there is increased erosion, I think the plan should be to build some kind of a revetment to keep the tower base away from the water, not to move it, because if you move it, you're gonna just, you know, might as well just throw it away. And guess what, guys? You can't do that. It's a contributing structure, and it has to come back before the Historical Commission as well as the Cape Cod Commission, before anything drastic like that happens to a contributing structure in the National Registered District. So I know I'm preaching to the choirs in terms of Terry, what he knows has to be done, but I assume the purpose of the report is here to attempt to prioritize some of these tasks, and I would just hope that the town would keep the Historical Commission and myself fully involved in the process as you try to make some changes and possible restoration of the towers. Sorry to be so long-winded, Peter, but it's an important subject, and thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Frank. Anyone else? Barbara.
Thank you for placing the item on the agenda this evening, and I wish to thank Selectman Board Member Jeff Dykens for bringing this issue to your attention. I'm Barb Cottam.
Barbara, would you introduce yourself, please?
Yes. I'm Barb Cottam, Chatham resident, and longtime advocate since 2008 for improving the Marconi Riders Cove Triangle land, creating woodland and waterfront trails, and a small open rest area on the site. A group of like-minded residents called the Friends of Marconi RCA Riders Cove was formed many years ago. Tom Quill and Michelle Maloney-Kitts are working with me to inform the town and group of our activity. We were encouraged that preliminary work was done by Paul Whitman, Assistant Conservation Agent, and another town employee last year about this time, and they cleared a rough waterfront trail and a spur that goes to the entrance of the trail, to the wood, back to the woodland trail where you begin. I walked the trail this Sunday and was so pleased to meet a young man, and young father, and his two sons that were walking on the trail, and the son had seen a little sign that there was a trail there. He said, "Dad, stop the car. We want to go and walk on the trail." I really have not advertised it, because the trail is filled with poison ivy and a lot of the trails that are open now. So, but anyway, they did walk on the trail, and they enjoyed it very much, and the younger man, younger son said, pointed out a pitch pine. He knew the pine trees. Somehow, I think his father had told him what was there. But anyway, that was enjoyable to see that, because that's what it's all about, is opening it up for the community. He does live in Chatham, so it's for the community to enjoy the site. We've been told that a request for bid is soon to be issued, and I'm available to help with that if needed, so please call me. I do have experience in landscaping. I owned a landscape company, and I have a degree in horticulture, landscape development, so I'd be glad to help with that. A professional landscape company with expertise in removal of invasive plants is required for this job, as you know. The Friends Group has raised $11,000 in funds to augment the project, as described in the CPA article. The Chatham Harwich Working Group has created two mahogany benches for the project that are now in storage, waiting to be installed. You might be interested that one of the benches is dedicated to former Chatham resident Rich Clifford of First Night Drop the Cod, and the other to Joe Linum, who helped design the benches, and sadly died of COVID in 2019. We realize that COVID has slowed down this project, but we hope this discussion will move along the request for bid being issued so that a landscape company can start work. In summary, the Friends have raised funds to augment the project, as described in the CPA article, and I thank you for setting aside the time to discuss these projects.
Thank you, Barbara. Any other comments? I don't see any from online. Okay. Let's continue. Next up is a public hearing on the annual entertainment license, entertainment license for Dogfish Taco Company. And Clerk, would please read the public notice.
All right. We opened this last week, but I'm going to reread the notice. Town of Chatham Select Board Public Hearing Notice. Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold the public hearing on Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, at 5:30 p.m. at the Large Meeting Room at the Town Office Annex 261 George Ryder Road to consider request for a new annual entertainment license for live amplified music to Peter J. Higgins DBA Dogfish Taco Company. Peter J. Higgins, Manager, 22 Barnhill Road, Chatham, Mass. 02633. All interested parties are encouraged to attend or participate in the hearing via Microsoft Teams through the link on the posted agenda. Signed, members of the Select Board. This was voted to be continued from last meeting to this evening.
Thank you, Cory. Welcome, Peter. Could you introduce yourself?
Peter Higgins, proprietor of the Dogfish Taco Company, and Chatham resident. I'm here before you guys to request the annual entertainment license, though we are only open from Memorial Day to Labor Day. And as I provided in my little description, we're only, our hours of operation are from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We're not going to change that this upcoming season, and we were hoping to kind of fill in some afternoon hours, some slower hours with some entertainment. We do have the inside of the cantina, and then we do have the little courtyard next to the building, where we would probably set up some acoustic music and/or a small little, I hate to say, use- and/or a small little, I hate to say user word, band, but you know, if you have more than one person, then it would be a band. And, and that's what we'd like to do. Most definitely, but not specifically, we will probably be doing mostly afternoon music. When we're, you know, dinner rolls around at 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock, we're so busy till we close at 8:00 that I don't wanna have music, it'll just interfere with what we're doing. But I don't wanna not be able to have it if there's some slower times. But, like I said, Memorial Day to Labor Day. We had, you know, we started out in 2020 with just the taco side. We're very pleased with the way it went during COVID for those six weeks. Then we got our full liquor license for this past season, and things went really well. Great reception, met a lot of people who live in the neighborhood. People were like, "We live down the street. We can walk here now. It's great to see some life back into the West Chatham corridor up there on that corner." I mean, I remember that corner when I was a kid. Farm stands, get your sunfish there, get some candy up there. So I'm really pleased to be part of that whole project of bringing West Chatham back. So we got the Missourvies have their ice cream store now, and you know, we're there. There's a new little garment shop around the corner. You still have chillers there. So I just think bringing a little bit of entertainment for the summer, you know, bring a little bit, you know, more to that corner. And, you know, I own the Dogfish Taco, I mean Dogfish Cafe originally downtown, where the Blue Coral is. You know, that was a residential sort of spot also. And we didn't do entertainment down there, but you know, we did have, we were open till 11:00 PM then. And I don't think we ever had any complaints about noise, and if we did, Rose would come over and let me know, and then we'd, we'd take care of that. But that's my, my presentation, and I'd like to take any questions if you have any.
Okay. Let me just make one comment first. Town of Chatham does have a bylaw, general bylaw, section 208-18, Noise Control. I'll just go down to the, the bottom line. It makes the point that the fact that the noise is plainly audible at said distance of 150 feet shall constitute prima facie evidence of a violation. So it has to be, noise cannot be heard past 150 feet is the way I read that. So, any questions from the board? Jeff?
Hello, Peter. How you doing?
I'm good, thank you, Mr. Dykens.
You know, I'm supportive of this application. I, I think Mr. Higgins makes some very good points about breathing some life into West Chatham and that end of West Chatham. I can recall when the South Wester was there in the corner, there was very loud music on, on the weekend nights that went very late into the night. So having an acoustic or a small band running until 8:00, 8:00 PM hopefully won't, hopefully won't be a detriment to the neighborhood. Now, where he's located, there aren't a lot of residents. There are some across the street and maybe one or two behind, but I think, you know, if we monitor, you know, monitor how it goes and, and see how it goes, and I think it's a reasonable request, and I'm gonna be fully supportive, and I wish him well. I think it really will, you know, probably help his business, but also help that end of town, that end of that, that mall there, if you will, and breathe some, you know, needed vitality into West Chatham. It is coming along, as you noted, Peter. We've got some really neat new businesses there, and, and you're one of them. So I'm gonna be fully supportive.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Shereen?
Hi, Peter. How are you?
I'm good. Shereen, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. I'm supportive of this application as well. I think that the idea, I just had a question about the acoustic or small amplified musicians. You're, you're not thinking of a full band scenario? Your concept is off-hours, mostly afternoons, slow times?
That's what we're thinking, because we, you know, we do have some times where we're busy for lunch, 11 to 2:00. Then dinner really doesn't start till like 5:00, 5:30, so it'd be nice to fill those hours. We'll give, give the public a reason to come by, you know, listen to some music, maybe grab a taco and a margarita, just for the afternoon.
Sure.
But I don't wanna limit myself, you know, for like, say, a private party or something like that, and someone wants to have a little bit of music. But I'm very conscious of the, of the neighborhood, and I always have been with my businesses. The gentleman, you mentioned residents, there's one gentleman behind us down the hill, behind Fugier's Building. We put up a fence for him so that he couldn't see up, and that kind of deflects the music or deflects the, the, the volume back towards the buildings, per se. So we can, we can even do that. Make sure that the music plays more out to the parking lot than, than not if we're outside. But if we're inside, we're inside the building, so.
Sure, and I imagine that the Shop Ahoy Plaza itself is a good buffer for some of the noise and stuff.
Yes.
And I remember the South Wester too. I mean, doors wide open, band starts at 10:00. The place would be hopping, so, and very loud. And, and, but that was where live, very amplified bands. I really wanna congratulate you on your part of revitalizing West Chatham. I think that restaurant, I was really excited to see it go up. I was like, "Oh, Dogfish Taco." And I didn't know, I was like, "Are they gonna sell dogfish tacos?" But I would've been more excited about that, but that's okay.
I tried, I tried.
But, but the idea that you took a risk during COVID when, you know, I'm sure that you had plans in place before that, but, you know, and that you slugged it through for that first year, and then last year it just looked like the place was rocking and, and, and with the ice cream store and chillers there, it just looks like a really, you know, there's a lot of life breath in, in West Chatham now, and it's really nice to see.
Very humbled by the, by the, by the response.
Yeah.
And mostly by everybody, you know, most people who live in the neighborhood, you know, walking from your side of the, of the town and walking up Barn Hill and coming over from 28, from some of the cottages and things like that. It was, it was really, really humbled by that.
And I think it's really important to be sensitive to the neighborhood and to the idea of buffering some of the, some of the neighbors' areas. I think that's a, a smart, conscious thing to do, so appreciate that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Corey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hey, Peter, how you doing tonight?
Good.
Good. No, very simply, very, very supportive of this. I mean, this is, this is what we should be doing. We got a, you know, small local business, local family running it. You know, you've gone through a very tough two years of COVID, and the food industry is gonna be very, very daunting, dealing with, with this, these issues that we've, we've all been dealing with. So you've been able to make it work. I think this request is reasonable. I mean, your hours of operation, if this was like a 10, 11 o'clock at night, I can understand some pause maybe with some neighbors and stuff, but with your hours of operation being 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and I think you're very conscious of what type of level of music would be inappropriate. So I have no concerns about your judgment on that. So I'm very supportive of this. I think it's good for, good for the neighborhood, good for the business, and good for the community. So you got my vote on this one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. Dean?
Yeah, I just wanted to reconfirm something, as I think I heard you say it a couple of times. Thank you, thank you, Peter. That, in general, your practice is going to be to have the music during the afternoons. It would be on infrequent occasions, is that fair enough to say, where you would have it in the evening? Going after 6:00, for example?
Yes, infrequent. Yes, that's a good.
Okay.
Good adjective.
Okay. I'll wait to hear from the public if there are any comments, and then we'll make a comment.
Thank you, Dean. My only comment is, I mentioned the, the bylaw. It's pretty, pretty straightforward, and it's something you can measure. There was a lot of, there, not. We had an email or two that said amplified music would, would be a problem. Well, you know, we, we do have a bylaw that says up to 150 feet. Like I said, we could, we can monitor that. Do I have any comments from the public? That Dr. Burns? Can't tell by the mask. I think so.
Yes, good evening. David Burns, Dr. Burns. It was quite interesting because I got numerous emails from people who I didn't even know knew our email address, and telephone calls about their concern of music, music loud and alcohol as, as a, a negative effect. It's been a problem for Harwich, and it was also a problem, a current problem in Orleans. The noise, the boisterous activity. I got two calls from people who live on Barn Hill, a new development there, Eastward Ho. I mean, Eastward Building, and they were, they were shocked that there, that this, our governing body would allow music well into the night or then at 11 o'clock. And I think there's gonna be a considerable backlash about this. Not the restaurant itself or, or the activity, but the music, the loud music is gonna carry far. And I'm, I'm objecting to it. I think it's a distraction too, with Roundabout being very close by.
Thank you, Dr. Burns.
We'd like your opinions on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. I have, anyone else in the audience before I go online? Thank you. Let's see. There's a David who has his hand up.
That would be me, David Bixby.
Oh, hi, David. Welcome.
Hi. I don't mean my comments on this in any way to be critical of the, of the establishment. I think it's great what they've done for that area. But having said that, I think live amplified music is just an awful idea. If you wanna create a problem in a residential neighborhood, bring in live amplified music. All you have to do, I hope you guys have been following what's going on in Harwich, where, where that situation is just a disaster. There's all kinds of lawsuits. Amplified music next to a residential area is gonna generate conflict, and it's gonna create problems. And it pits, it pits businessmen against residents, and the town gets in the middle of it. I'd also be concerned that precedent is always an issue. Do, do you envision this kind of, is this gonna be a green light to more amplified music? I don't think that's gonna be healthy for the residential areas. I'm very bothered by the fact that I think this is very contradictory to the town bylaw on noise. On several occasions in the past couple of years, I've had to go down to that area. I, I forget the name of the mall. Is it Shop Ah Hall, Shop Ah Hoy Mall? Whatever that, whatever that business district is, there's, have been people there that have set up music stations and amplified that music. And that music bounces throughout the neighborhood and is very loud right through my neighborhood. You can hear it in the house, above the TV. It's a, it's a problem. When I've gone down and talked to people, they've turned it right down. But I just see this as, this is just not, this is not going to be good if you have amplified music. When I hear it's gonna be mostly in the afternoon, but the owner doesn't want to be restricted to the possibility of having music up until 8:00. It'll, if, if it's gonna be infrequent, then why not just not do it? If you insist on approving this, cut it off at 4:00. These kind of backdoor suggestions that it just leaves the door open to more problems. I think the issue of the South Wester is irrelevant because you had a music blasting through the neighborhood at one point in history. That's just not acceptable today, and is, and it's not tolerated. I'm just very concerned that amplification of music is going to create problems. And I cannot imagine how you can have 150, if, if you're gonna amplify music, it's gonna go beyond 150 feet. I would suggest that you eliminate live, live music, okay, no amplification. I don't know why people need to amplify music. It's gonna be a problem. I guess that's, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else in the public? I don't see any, anyone else here. Bring it back to the board, Corey, and then Dean.
No, no, no. That's, the comments are, you know, for the public are always appreciated. I, I just wanna re, restate, I'm supportive. This is 11 o'clock to 8 o'clock. This is being done from a, from a business decision to try to fill my, at least according to my, the presentation that was presented. My understanding is to fill the voids of some low time for, of the public. I think the business owner is seasoned enough to understand that, you know, they're gonna do it in a very tasteful manner. This is a local family, local business. I, I'm willing to give them the benefit of the doubt. I think it will be fine. I don't think they're gonna be ruckus, you know, noises at, you know, wee hours in the morning. Where, where operation is 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM. I think for now, we keep those hours in the, you know, for the license and give them the benefit of the doubt. I, I would think more optimistically because we gotta, you know, be supportive of our, our small businesses. And I think generally speaking, you know, the owner showed good taste and good management in past businesses in town. So I would give them the benefit of the doubt, and I'm gonna keep my support on this.
Thank you, Corey. Dean?
Thank you, Peter. Peter, can I ask you one other question, just deriving from the comments that were made just now? If you were limited to only acoustic music, was that something that would be workable within your business plan, or?
So when filling out the application, you know, you've got live music and amplification system. So is this considered an amplification system? So if an acoustic person is, you know, playing a guitar and singing into a microphone with a couple of speakers, so people can hear him, hear them sing, sing, is that considered amplification? Or is it when I plug in my bank of, you know, 20 Marshall amps and start jamming out? If that's what they're worried about, that's not what I would like to have. But that's, my question is, is this amplification? If I'm talking into this microphone, into these speakers, is that considered amplification? So if I have someone-
Literally, I guess it is, but I would have to defer to the building inspector.
And singing into a microphone that has a couple of speakers attached to it, that's amplified music.
Yeah.
So, so that's why you check amplification.
But that's your, that's your preference?
My preference is to have acoustic music.
Okay.
But then, for them to be able to sing over a system.
Okay.
You know, a microphone system, yes. So, I don't know, can I keep going?
Yeah, go ahead. No, I don't have any other questions.
No, I just, listening to the comments, and I understand everybody is concerned. Some people are concerned, some people aren't. But isn't that why the process is you, you, you apply for the license, and then you're also, you know, you're, you're held to what you've applied for? And you guys always have the power in, in when, to reissue, to renew or not to renew? You know, so for me, love to be on a, you know, probationary period where, you know, for the first year, which would be the summer of 2022, you know, we see how it goes. You know, we, we will either have some complaints or we won't. Hopefully, we won't, because we're not gonna be going past 8:00. If we go later on in the, in the day, then, then 5:00 or 6:00, and then we can revisit it, and if it's, you know, if there's issues with the, with the neighborhood, hopefully I can work through them with them, or there isn't any issues and we, and we keep moving forward. But to just try to, some people just say, "No, this is gonna be an issue," but we don't know that yet. So that's why the process is to apply for it. You get granted, but then you also have to be held responsible, and that's what the renewal process is for.
Yeah.
That's what I'd like to defend myself a little bit on that.
Well, thank, thank you for that explanation. And, you know, it is, it's our job as the licensing authority to make judgments on the presentations that are given before us. My understanding is that you've had, in your history of running establishments in this town, there haven't really been any issues. Certainly not while I've been on this board, and, and that I can remember. And, and, you know, I, I take your representations to us on their faith, on, on good faith, on its face. face. And you've expressed what your preferences are and what you're likely to be doing, which is to have acoustic music preferably, but there might be some amplification. And that you're more likely to be doing it in the afternoon than you are in the evening, early evening, because this license request ends at eight o'clock p.m. So, and this board retains the authority, as we do with every licensed establishment in this town, to entertain complaints and address them. We can even revoke licenses. We don't even have to wait till the renewal period. So, you know, you wouldn't be on probation, as far as I'm concerned, if you granted this license. So in any event, hearing what we've heard, I intend to support the request. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dean. Jeff and then Shereen.
Thank you, Peter, and thank you to the public, the folks that spoke. Yeah, I was going to mention that it really doesn't, there's no need to have a probationary period. You know, it's either going to, it's going to go and do well and you have a good track record. And I have no, you know, no concerns about at least trying to have some entertainment in West Chatham next summer until 8:00 p.m. I think 8:00 p.m. is very reasonable. I think late afternoon until 8:00 p.m. is fine. And I'm more than willing to give it a try because I do think it'll be helpful to the West Chatham corridor and bring some life into that area. So I'm fully supportive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Shereen?
So you clearly stated your intent and I think you explained yourself fully and the license speaks for itself. So I'm going to move to, I'm going to make a motion. And that's to approve the application for an annual entertainment license by Peter J. Higgins, doing business as Dogfish Taco Company, 22 Barn Hill Road, for live music.
Second. Any further discussion? My only comment is we've approved a number of these over the last year in different areas, some downtown, some in areas. We haven't received any complaints because everyone understands they're going to get them if they go beyond what the bylaw requires. So with saying that, let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next up is our business agenda. First one is consider an Oktoberfest request, sale on town property. And is Jennifer online?
Yes.
Welcome. I'm sorry.
Just a disclosure that I am a member of the Chatham Merchants Association, so.
Thank you, Corey. Hi, Jennifer.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm here on behalf of the Chatham Chamber of Commerce and Merchants Association requesting the sale of goods in the town lot at Chatham Bar's Ave., Kate Gold Park, for the annual Oktoberfest on October 23rd from 10:30 to 4:30 p.m.
Okay, and there's a whole number. You've done this before.
I have done this before, yes.
Are there any changes from what you've done before?
No, there are no changes this year. We obviously took a year off due to COVID last year and we are, you know, bringing it back this year. We have the pumpkin people in the park, which we already have permission from Parks and Rec. They will go up this Friday, the 15th, and will be up through the 31st. We have games and face painting and crafts for families. We are, you know, taking COVID precautions. We have signage requesting that, you know, folks socially distance as much as possible. We'll have hand sanitizer masks available. We're even going to have a decorate your own mask craft for children. But everything else will remain the same as it has in the past.
Thank you. Any comments? I have Shereen and then Dean.
So Jennifer, welcome back. This year is special to see the activities coming back downtown. Appreciate the update on the social distancing. But it's not only the sale of goods on town property, but it's outdoor display of goods. You're also requesting alcohol on town property and special one-day permit as well as an entertainment permit. So it looks like nothing else is different from what you've done in previous years. Have you lined up the bands yet?
Yeah. We have, hoping that we're going to get approval tonight. And yes, we do have a few requests. I wasn't sure if we were going in one by one. But we have the Grab Brother, we have the Chatham Band kicking us off. We've pushed it back a little bit to, hopefully, we know that town meeting is in the morning, so we've pushed the start time of the band back a bit. And so we have them playing, we have the Grab Brothers and Club Nine Ball, some local favorites, who will be playing.
Sounds like fun. I love the Grab Brothers. I come from that area.
Dean, thanks.
Thank you. Hi, Jennifer. I just added one question about, from your memo to the board. You talk about all food vendors are required to request a temporary food permit. Do we anticipate that we're going to see separate applications for permits from various establishments? Or is this the one all-encompassing omnibus application?
Yeah. I've been in touch with the Board of Health and each vendor is required to fill out all permits of them. I don't anticipate that the board would receive any additional requests.
So they'll all go to the Board of Health?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'm supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anything else? Anyone else from the board? I have a motion. We have two of them. Dean?
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant a special one-day liquor license to Jennifer Allard on behalf of the Chatham Merchants Association for Saturday, October 23rd, 2021, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. for service at the Chatham Bar's Avenue parking lot and to further approve the outdoor sale of goods and grant permission to possess or consume alcohol on town property as associated with this permit.
Second?
Second.
Like with any discussion? Very none? Let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. We have another motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant a one-day entertainment permit to Jennifer Allard on behalf of the Chatham Merchants Association for Saturday, October 23rd, 2021, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. at Kate Gold Park Bandstand for live outdoor amplified music.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? None? Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you very much, Jennifer. Have a good one. And thank you for moving it over a little bit for our town meeting.
Of course. Hope to see you there. Bye.
You bet. Oh, definitely. Okay. Next is a consideration of, I love this, it's a giant donation. And it's from Sandwich Giants and, is it Stephen and Mary Beth, both?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. So Stephen and I, when we moved to town six years ago, I was trying to figure out what to do in the wintertime and I was reading the Cape Cod Times and there was an article about the Sandwich Giants. And so I said, we're going to get in our car and we're going to go out at four o'clock on a winter's evening and drive down Route 6 and see all the Sandwich Giants. The Sandwich Giants are illuminated structures approximately 10 to 15 feet tall outside varying establishments along Route 6, starting in Sandwich, Massachusetts. And an artist by the name of Michael Magar, who is a glass blower, started this in 1998. And it has expanded to now consist of 60 structures now along Route 6. The closest ones being in Orleans, Massachusetts. In any event, we thought about this for a really long time to see whether Chatham might be the next town on the Cape that would be ripe for a giant. And we are proposing that we donate three giants in the form of a pod of whales to the town of Chatham to be placed in front of the community center through the holiday season from beginning of December through the end of January. They're not really Christmas decorations per se, but just illuminated decorations. But being the town by the sea, it would be a lovely addition to make families and children and adults smile when they drive into the town of Chatham. So we're asking the town to take this donation that would be constructed by Michael Magar and funded by Stephen and myself and illuminated by us. And you've seen the entire proposal and the photographs that we included in the packet today. So I, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer any.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Any questions or comments from the board? Yeah, Shereen?
So, thank you, guys. I know that you spoke to me earlier on this season about this idea and talked with the town manager. I think that's when I was still chair. The idea is a really wonderful idea. Public display art is so needed in our world. It's free, it's, you know, something opportunistic for the public to be able to review. And really appreciate the idea that you are donating this to the town. There's probably a few details we need to express about installation, storage, maintenance and whatnot. But I feel that this is a really fun project. It pays, you know, it's in honor of some of our natural resources. It's keeping in the theme of what is really, you know, a very Cape Cod thing, the whales going along with, you know, other public display pieces that we've done, that the merchants have done and whatnot. So I'm very supportive of this. I guess what we have to think about is, as I said, the storage and installation of the piece and the continued maintenance concept. I don't know if we have any update from the park department or anything like that that could speak to that.
Mr. Chair, I have not heard any objections or any issues with the storage, so I think we're set.
Great. Wonderful.
And Shereen, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead. Stephen?
Thank you. My mic wasn't working earlier. One correction I would like to make pursuant to the notes, it's, I guess on page three of your memo. I think we'd actually like to see if we can keep these deployed until mid to late February, rather than January, take it out of kind of the holiday cycle and just continue to add some brightness to town over the dark winter. Insofar as storage is concerned, Michael, the artist, has one that's 28 years old that when it's not deployed is kept leaning against a fence in his backyard. And there's been no maintenance and it's in perfectly good condition. So they don't require much.
Yeah, I think you made a comment at one time, storing it, it's not like you have to have it up straight. It's very low, you could turn it over and you can store it carefully. So it doesn't take up a lot of space.
And they're very lightweight. Easily handled by one or two persons.
Okay, thank you. Corey and then Jeff.
No, thank you guys very much. It's a very generous offer for the town. You know, displaying of art is always a good asset to the community. But Stephen, your comment about having one person be able to move this, is there anything we would need to do to safeguard these? I'm not familiar with the other locations because I know sadly enough, there's been some vandalism in that area. We've had the dugout and the electrical box over at Veterans Field vandalized over the last year, tagged and other stuff going on. So I hate to set up a target that is too easy. So is there anything we would need to do to safeguard these? Because I'd hate to see some fool ruin it for everybody.
Yeah, no, I take your point and certainly something we have thought about, given the kind of petty vandalism we've seen with the Sharks in the Park. You know, our thought was that prospectively we could acquire a couple of wireless Wi-Fi cameras. I think Jerry Evans rigs up a couple of cameras for the Arts in the Park event and, you know, possibly deploy some lights. But I think, you know, lights would to some degree potentially defeat the purpose of the installation. But we'd be happy to fund a couple of wireless cameras that we could pack under the trees if people were willing to do that.
Thank you.
Otherwise, I think we just have to trust our neighbors.
Who was first? Was it Jeff or Dean? Jeff and then Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mary Beth and Stephen. What a great idea. Public display of art such as this is just so unique. I am familiar with the Sandwich Giants, having driven down 6A and, you know, Christmas time. It's really very cool and it's, they are giant, they kind of, the first time you see them, they're kind of disarming and they really get your attention. And then you want to go back and see them again. So, you know, I think it's just a really neat idea. I love the fact they're whales and the way, at least the sculptures that I see in the pictures, they look very, you know, evocative of movement and they just look really cool. So, you know, I'd be interested to see that when they're all lit up with, you know, and evocative of water as well, I bet they're going to be cool. So I'm very supportive. I really thank you for your generosity and your thoughtfulness to do this for the community. And I think it's great having it at the community center and I think it's a good idea to have them kind of through the winter as well. I agree with you, Stephen, that it'll kind of brighten up the winter, you know, all winter long. Gets a little long January, February, March, April. So anyway, I think it's a great idea. So I'm obviously fully supportive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff and Dean. Dean?
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Mary Beth and Stephen. I'm supportive of this. I thank you for your generous offer to the town on this. Very creative and I think very fitting. I was out of the room for momentarily. Did you, I don't know if you touched on this, is this going to require approval from the Park and Rec Commission? Do they have any jurisdiction over this? Maybe to the town manager?
I think that it's the board's call on it, but certainly we can notify the Parks and Rec Commission. And I know it's not in the HBD district.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I will support this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dean. And my only comment is what was brought up in the staff report and a comment that I thought that was very appropriate is bring a smile to your face. And I think it will. And it's going to be in the right location and I think it's very appropriate. And thank you very much for your generous support and generosity. Jeff, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the donation of the proposed sculpture of three whale forms illuminated with blue lights for annual wintertime installation on the lawn of the community center.
Second.
Again, any discussion? If not, let's go to a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you very much.
Terrific. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is consider support of a transfer fee. Belong to a coalition, a transfer fee. I brought it forward and I'll also let Jeff talk to this a little as the transfer fee was his. I'll just paraphrase a couple of things out of our staff report. There's a growing number of cities and towns that have passed local legislation seeking to enact a transfer fee specifically for affordable housing. And they include, well, I'll give them to you, Arlington, Boston, Brookline, Chatham, Concord, Nantucket, Provincetown, Wellfleet, Somerville are among them and there are others that are looking forward to do it, especially now since the housing prices have really gone up. What this coalition is, is it's a grassroots organization, not only of those towns, but a number of organizations that are, you know, nonprofits. There are also a number of organizations that support this local bill, I mean, to support this overriding bill. It's an enabling legislation that would allow for a broad, locally determined set of parameters. In other words, each of the towns that I mentioned that passed a local legislation have some difference in them. This would be an overarching legislation that's already been filed, both in the House and the Senate. And it goes from like 0.5% to 2% of a transfer fee and then you can put whatever you want in there. And the other part of it is that you would have to have this, and it starts at either a million and up. The point is you'd have to have passed something to be able to be involved with this legislation. And my point is, it's happening now. There's a group that is part of the coalition and we were requested and invited to join the group to help support the Cape and Islands effort. And I think in any kind of a coalition like this where the, where things are happening on the hill and we already have, you know, a little skin in the game, that it would be better to be part of it than not. It just makes sense that you want to have some sort of, you know, you want to take- It just makes sense that you want to have some sort of, you know, you want to take care of our local interest too, at the same time that we're looking to get some support from the state. So Jeff, you have any other comments?
Thank you for your note, Peter. That was very well, very well put. You know, our request this evening is to, is to join this, join the coalition, to have the town join the coalition. I'm interested in the enabling legislation so that each town is able to craft their own response, but that, that the legislature pass enabling legislation that allows towns to do just that. So I'm particularly interested in that. And I was struck with the, we had a meeting with Tucker from Nantucket and Laura from Martha's Vineyard. I was struck with the nature of the local response, or I should say, the regional response to this issue and efforts through Julian Seer and perhaps through Sarah Peak. So we really need, I think, to plug into the regional effort through them and plug into this transfer fee coalition that is really dogging this issue for enabling legislation and throughout the state. Again, my bent is really through enabling legislation because I do think every town is different and there are many different versions of this facing the legislation right now. But I think it's very important with energy going around this issue now that we get involved and we get involved early and often. So I mean, we didn't want to, you know, I was ready to join, but Pete in his wisdom said, I think we better bring it back to the board, so here we are.
Thank you, Jeff. Dean, how's he end up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I can't see myself supporting this. I opposed the legislation that was proposed at town meeting, as everybody in this town knows. Town meeting voted to authorize its being filed. It was filed. I would have supported filing it had it been brought before the board because town meeting endorsed it. But as I read the material that has been presented, there are two different bills at least, and they have two different thresholds. One is that, and this, I'm not sure what number bill this is, but this tax enabling would apply to the median statewide sale price for a single family home, which is currently And the other bill that's talked about has a threshold of $1 million. The legislation that the town of Chatham filed was $2 million. Now, I know it's enabling legislation and it's up to every town, if this, municipality, if this is adopted in this form, whether it's 529 or a million, to decide what they want to do. But we've seen from the experience in 2021, we had two special town meetings that were held. And it's very easy to organize a special town meeting in the off season, as we saw with Stepping Stones Road and we saw one with the Monomoy Theater. So it's quite possible that the town of Chatham could be asked at a special town meeting when a lot of people are away to support a transfer tax on something that's considerably less than $2 million that the annual town meeting has already endorsed. So I think there is a potential concern for not just the high-end property tax owners, property owners in this town. And I, as everyone knows, I don't like new taxes. I'm not saying anyone on this panel likes new taxes, but I don't think every problem has to be solved with a new tax. We have legislation on the hill to allow for CPA funding for attainable housing. We could have very easily, if the Community Preservation Committee were amenable, we could have in excess of $1 million a year coming out of the CPA applied to attainable housing and affordable housing for a limited period of time and put aside some of the other projects and just fund those elements of the Community Preservation Act that we're responsible for funding each year, which is about 200,000 or 300,000, I believe, maybe 400. So, and we talk about a broad coalition. Yes, there are a number of groups, as you point out, Mr. Chairman. Most of these are non-governmental groups. There are only nine cities and towns out of 351 that have signed on to this. And some of them are large communities like Arlington, Brookline, the city of Boston, town of Concord, the city of Somerville. There are only three towns on the Cape that have signed on to this. If you throw in Nantucket, that's four that have signed on to this concept. So I suspect I'm going to be a minority of one tonight, but those are my thoughts on this. Thank you.
Okay, Shereen?
So I'm in support of this and I recognize the nuances of trying to fund opportunity for affordable housing projects go hand in hand with the opportunity to find housing projects. And I think that the idea that Chatham is in keeping with Nantucket and Province Town that have similar growing pains as we do when it comes to the crisis around housing is significant. And Wellfleet's right behind us. They've grown exponentially this year in their residency. And this, what we're looking at for, for, for the Cape, for any coastal community is a crisis of housing that we do not have one silver bullet. It's going to take many different creations of funding opportunities and other opportunities to get to where we want to be with having affordable and attainable housing in our community. So I'm in support of signing on to this coalition. I believe that we need to be extremely aggressive in what we're trying to do for our communities. And it's, it's just, this is a local option, a concept piece. So I like the idea that we have nonprofits that are reaching out and advocating for communities. We know as a town how difficult it is to get there. You only have to look at what we've tried to do in the last few years. So that's my thoughts on this and I will be supporting signing on to the coalition.
Corey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was a little bit tough for me. Obviously, you know, housing initiatives, you know, is something we need to focus on. We're desperate need of efforts in this, in this Cape region, you name it. You know, I did, I did vote in favor of the transfer fee discussion moving forward. I think it's worth having some further review and consideration if it's done to fit the best needs of Chatham in our community. I'm going to support this with some reluctance. I got to put it out there. Every town and community is very different and we got to keep that in mind. I do think, I just want to make sure we don't lose sight of what we need for Chatham. Because Chatham's needs are very different than other towns' needs and, you know, every community and every state, town is clearly different. But I think, you know, upside and downside of every conversation, I think there's a little more upside to joining the coalition. You know, I guess I have a little hesitation in doing so, but I'd rather err on the side of caution because I do think housing initiatives are something we desperately need. And I'm hoping that we can continue to stay focused on what we need as our, for our community and make this move in the most productive way for Chatham and the voids that we have, which hopefully we can fill sooner than later. So with some reluctance, I am going to support this. Thank you.
Okay, Shereen?
I'm going to make a motion and then I guess you might hear some more from others. But the motion is I move the town join the coalition.
I second that.
Second from Jeff, any other comments? My only other comment would be, I, you know, I always appreciate what Select Board Member DeCastro makes an argument. And I can understand exactly where he's coming from. My point is, we passed, like he said, we passed this at town meeting. It is an effort that's going on all over the state to do something between two bills. I just want to be part of that rather than not be part of it. I think that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from and I understand that I'd look out for our interest particularly. So that's basically it. So let's take a vote. I'll start now with Jeff.
Aye.
Dean?
No.
Corey?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you very much. Okay, next is our CPA, CPA Act-funded, CPA Act, great, Community Preservation Act-funded projects. And it's an update and it's, Alex, welcome again.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, in your packet tonight is just a status on those Community Preservation Act projects that have to do with the Marconi area, as was mentioned by one of the previous speakers. So at the meeting on September 24th, Board Member Dykens had requested a status update on these particular projects. And the three projects that we've listed are the Marconi Powerhouse and Garage project for $22,500, which was approved in 2017 for FY 2018. The Marconi RCA District for $20,000 approved for FY 19 at the annual town meeting in 2018. And the Marconi Riders Cove Triangle, the removal of invasive species and the pathways for $79,000, which was approved at the annual town meeting in 2019 for FY 2020. And just as the public and might not be aware, the funds remain for these projects because they're town-owned projects and we don't close those out as we know the status of the projects. So the funding does remain. And we've provided a little status update on each of the projects here. So we have the Marconi Powerhouse and Garage project, which was for the rehabilitation and restoration of the windows and doors on the powerhouse and also the windows, doors, rakeboards, rafter tails and soffits on the garage building. So that project was sort of incorporated into the broader historic building painting request for proposal, which was issued last year. So we have a target start date of late this fall. So it was supposed to start last fall, but again, with COVID restrictions and some of the delays with the vendors, it was difficult to get that underway. So this fall, it's underway now, so that's a good thing that we've got that started. And then for the Marconi RCA District, this was what Mr. Messina had mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, that this is an assessment of the tower district and the field assessment and building protection, building structure protections. So again, this is to assess what can be done to protect and maintain the towers as well as the buildings. Not necessarily, you know, we would look at if we have to move a tower, but again, this is just the study for that and understanding that the tower would be not removed and dismantled, but if it, you know, could be moved to another location within the district. The goal would be to keep it where it's at and to definitely try to maintain that tower, tower number one by Riders Cove. So again, we had challenges getting the project moving, but again, we're trying to get a, it will be up and running. And then there'll probably be future CPC requests for funding to actually do the work. As Ms. Cotnam had mentioned earlier, Marconi Riders Cove Triangle Improvement Project was included funds to remove the invasive species. So we're reviewing the scope of services at this time prior to finalizing the bid species and putting this project out to bid with a goal to get this going now, as the fall is a good time to remove these invasive species and get it ready for the spring and summer season. We also wanted to provide an update on the hotel building because there was some comments that there was some damage there or leaky roof. I can't remember. I know Terry Whelan is on the call, so he might have some more information on that. But the facilities department did not receive any work orders or requests for any leak repairs. So again, we always look at this. This is not part of the Community Preservation Act funding. This is a capital funding that we have to maintain our buildings. So it's funded in the FY 2020 capital budget for the historic building maintenance. So I'm happy to answer any questions. As I said, I know Terry is on the call, who could address any specifics to each of these projects. And I also want to let you know that in your packet, I gave you a full accounting of all the projects that have been approved since the inception, since Chatham adopted the Community Preservation Act back in FY 2004. And a total of, you know, $18.8 million has been appropriated for projects to cover the affordable housing, historic, open space and recreation, as well as small amounts for the administrative side of things. So happy to answer any questions. This was just an update for the board as requested.
Yeah, Dean, Dykens, Jeff brought this forward, so I'll let him go first and then Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much, Alex, for that summary and also for the detail in the package. I thought it was, I thought it was excellent. You know, Edie Crowell invited me to come by a board meeting where they had the strategic plan being re-presented. It was, they were, the consultant was there five years ago and it was a fascinating meeting. But during the course of the meeting, kind of towards the end, they kind of, you know, asked me to forward their concerns about the powerhouse number one, the RCA District issues number two, and the triangle number three. Hotel, I had never been in the hotel, frankly, and I was really awestruck by how neat it was and what great repair it was in. The inside is excellent. Whoever, Frank and the crew and the Marconi folks did a wonderful job with that building and the town, whoever did it, just did a wonderful job. So anyway, I was very impressed. But this is an excellent summary. My role is to, is to prod a little bit to get some of these projects done. I do use Riders Cove all the time and I go by the powerhouse all the time and it is, it needs some attention, needs a lot of attention. So I'm pleased to see and hear that you guys are going to get right on it here this fall. And Terry, thank you for that. What Frank spoke about in the RCA District, folks are worried about the towers. They are part of the historic structures there and I think, you know, we have to take care of them. And I think that may be more, more science than art. I don't know how old they are, but it's going to take some sandblasting and painting, et cetera, et cetera. And I don't, I don't know what, you know, I don't know about the issue of being close to the, to the water there, but I think that's an important one to, to bring forward and kind of figure out before, I think moving those things, I think Frank is right, moving them is, would be science and art. That would be quite a project. So anyway, and then the triangle, I know has been, Riders Cove Triangle Improvement Project has been near and dear to Barbara Cotnam's heart for many, many years and it'd be, it'd be really neat to see that move forward and, and move forward with completion so that we can place those benches that, you know, are really very meaningful to a lot of people out there, you know, and overlooking Riders Cove. So I'll stop there. I just, my role is just to bring the issue forward, make sure we get some energy going around these projects again. And I know that Marconi Board and the members would be very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Select Board Member Dykens for bringing this forward. And thank you, Alex, for the material. It's the first time I've seen a full listing comprehensively of all the expenditures and application of CPC funds since its inception. And for the benefit of the public, I think the distribution has been fairly equitable. There's about $6 million for historic, $6 million for housing, $3 million for open space and two, almost $3 million for recreation. And that's a tribute, I think, to the work of the Community Preservation Committee, the Select Board and the, and town meeting. With respect to the particular projects that have been mentioned, I don't know what the solution is about the tower, but I agree with the sentiment expressed by Chairman Messina and Mr. Dykens. If we can keep it in its present place, we should try to do that. With respect to the powerhouse, I'm happy to hear that we're making some progress, or going to be making some progress on that because there are some people who have an eye on that powerhouse for various purposes and I'm one of them because I think it might be suitable for an academic initiative that we've, some of us have been working on. And with respect to the triangle project, I would like to see that move quickly as Ms. Cotnam has urged us this evening and I certainly would encourage the town manager and your staff to take Barbara up on her kind of offer to participate in the project. So if we can somehow involve or collaborate with her and take, take advantage of her expertise and also with the Friends Group, consistent with our local bidding requirements. So that would be my, my strong suggestion, but thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, the only comment I'll make is that rather than say what everyone else has said, I've always been supportive of the Marconi, especially as a historic district. I, I understand that we're moving ahead. I could understand what the comment that was made that it was in our staff, staff report that it wasn't the highest priority. And there are a number of reasons possibly for that, obviously COVID and not being able to get things done. But I think we're, we're, we're at a point where we should make it a priority and I think that's already happening. And that's, that's good. Frank made a good point about those, those. Frank made a good point about those, that tower. And Jeff, that, that building was done by the, the volunteer board members of Marconi. And over the, over the years, and I was always amazed at how 12 to 15 or 20 people at the most put that together and for the cost that they did with the town support. I've heard it called, you know, what a good example of public-private partnership and it really, it really is.
Did a wonderful job.
It is, and it's super. The inside of that building and the outside, it took a lot on that. I'll just reinforce the fact that Barbara's been working on that park when I was brand new in this town. And I think it should be a priority and it, you know, it's in a sort of an out of, out of way spot until you, you go there and then, and then it, I remember walking it, it is invasive, there's a lot of invasive there. And I, me and, I have a problem with poison ivy if I even look at it. But we were able to get through there. So anyway, I, I'm very supportive of keeping the, you know, the priorities going and making sure that we can get it done and just appreciate everything that's been done, especially Alex and Terry and the group. So, there's no vote on this, it's just an update. If there's nothing else? Okay, that ends our discussion and I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Okay, I'll start with Shereen.
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye and good evening, Chatham, thank you very much.